Good evening. It's now time for the Huntington City Council meeting for Monday, April 26, 2021, at 7:30 PM. For item number one, we'll welcome Mike Greider, Reverend Mike Greider from Mission Tri-State, to lead the invocation, and Councilman Bailey will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, you may choose to rise and to silence your cell phones. Reverend Greider.
Father, we come to here this evening, and again, thank you for this beautiful city that you've allowed us to be a part of. And we ask, Holy Spirit, to just ask you to lead, guide, and direct this council, give them divine wisdom, and we ask that you continue to etch your dream for this city under our hearts, so that, God, we might be able to move forward in a way that truly brings something beautiful happening, that will truly be a blessing to this region and be an example to this nation. So we speak this blessing over the council night, and we declare that in Jesus' name in everyone's said.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Ms. Miller. Will you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Present.
Mr. Bowen.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Mount.
Here.
Ms. Rumbaugh.
Here.
Mr. Shockley.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Ms. Wheeler.
Here.
We do have a quorum. All members are present, none calling in. Item three is the synopsis of the last meeting.
Madam Chair, I move for the adoption.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shockley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mount. Any discussion on the motion? Then we vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The synopsis is approved. Item four, we'll welcome the mayor for his report. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members. Just a brief report on trash and sanitation for the month of March. Public Works collected 1,574 tons of household garbage, 465 tons of loose trash, and crews also completed 605 special pickups. I wanted to advise you, each of you, that we're about to resume what has been a seasonal tradition with, by my administration since 2015. I have, since 2015, established community walks in every council district involving the chiefs of police, fire chief, public works, director, the director of the water quality board, and we usually have these walks in coordination with the council members of the council member individual district. So with nine council districts, we'll have nine walks during the spring and summer, and then nine walks in the summer and fall. We've had over 70 walks to this point. To the point, and council members who served before, found that after a while, we're walking through the same areas, but the advantage to you and to us is that we're able to take the feedback that we've received from our residents, and then we're able to do a double check. Have we been able to take care of the problem? Every neighborhood was showing us very similar problems. I don't care if it was a so-called wealthy neighborhood, or if it was one that was ravaged with unemployment. We had to deal with crumbling infrastructure, sidewalks, roads, substandard housing. Residents would point out, "That house right there, it's a drug house." We have the chief of police, we'd have others, and then the beauty of it would be, in a couple of weeks, we'd, all of a sudden, we'd be having a raid. Or it could have just been with police, could have been affirming the problems that we were beginning to see, and we were able to gather some additional intel. It opened my eyes immensely. In 2015, when we had the first walks and came through, Ms. Johnson, in your district, was walking through there, and it broke my heart. That's when I realized how much we had to fix sidewalks, because I had individuals who were in wheelchairs wanting to walk through the neighborhood with us, but they couldn't go on the sidewalk. They were out in the middle of the road, because the sidewalks were so, in such crumbling condition, but that's when we came up with the sidewalk program all over the city. This will be instructive to you. It will be instructive to your, to the residents, your constituents in the area that you have. The key is, is that you will be working with the residents in your area to identify a route. There's no way in Hades we're going to hit it all in one walk. 60 minutes to 90 minutes is all that it takes, and frankly, it ends up more of a stroll than it is a walk, because we'll walk a while, we'll stop, we'll look. It certainly isn't going to be an exertion, but the one thing that I learned is that when we come out, we're outside, we're not, this was, we did this instead of having an open appointment night that people could come to City Hall to meet with the mayor. I mean, frankly, how arrogant. Let's go to them. And what was amazing about it is that every time I've had the walk, there's some individuals that are waiting, and they're not going to come out and start with us. There are several that will walk right along with us, but there's some that are waiting along the way. Sometimes they have a few choice words to say, other times they have lemonade or cookies or something, but it is a true neighborhood walk, and it's helped me have an appreciation of what we have within the city. There are some folks that don't pay a lick of attention at anything, and they say, "You've never come by here," and it's said, "Well, by this time, we will have been by six or seven times in these neighborhoods." Brian Chambers helps coordinate all of this. In a rainy season, we find ourselves that we have to cancel it. We'll look early in the morning, what's the weather look like, and we might have to postpone it, but we get it done. Some people walk their dogs. You might remember when I took my dogs on one of the walks, and it's just a very pleasant, pleasant experience. Helps us get to know each other better, helps us learn how to interact with our constituents together. If it's something that you're interested in participating in, let Brian know a date that could. If you don't want to, and it's just not your thing, that's fine. We'll let you know when I'm coming through the neighborhood, though. We are doing this. I want you involved. But if this is something that just either you can schedule it, or just isn't something you're interested in, different strokes for different folks. That's okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. This evening, we have a special guest with us, one of our state-elected officers, and as this was arranged by our esteemed colleague, Councilwoman Anderson, I'll call on him to make the introduction. Councilwoman Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the 25th West Virginia State Treasurer, Riley Moore, who's come to us tonight, instead of being at home, with his wife and two children, to make a presentation regarding the newly-passed Jump Start Savings Plan, which is a great solution for many families in our city and young people and their future success. Mr. Treasurer, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. It's hard to tell, but I'm beaming under this mask. Thank you for that very nice introduction, Dale. Appreciate that. So I'll try to be brief. I know you all are busy, but I can't thank you enough for extending this invitation to me. So I was actually on WSAZ talking about this a little bit today, the Jump Start Savings Plan, and Mayor Williams and I were just talking about this recently when we were out in, where's the airfield that's out there? Yeah, where they're doing the new aircraft manufacturing partnered with Marshall, which is going to be a tremendous program. So Jump Start Savings Plan is like a college savings plan, but it's for after graduation. So the investment piece works exactly like a 529 college savings plan, but these dollars are for after graduation. Now, what they're for is to be able to buy tools, equipment, licenses, and certifications, and business startup costs. So to qualify for this, you have to have graduated from a trade, technical, or community college. So this is for folks that are working in trades and vocations, and it's not specific to that trade or vocation. You could be a welder, you could be a hairdresser. It's very expansive, and also those qualified expenses are very expansive. If you needed to buy a blow dryer, or chairs, what have you, as long as it's going towards your education, what you've received those degrees for, or those certifications, it's a qualified expense. Now, how it's different is a little bit of the investment piece, where you can write off up to $25,000 off your income tax annually. So in practice, how that would work is, if you make $75,000 in a year, you can take a deduction. A deduction of $25,000 is your maximum, and then you could, you'd be, your federally adjusted gross income then would be $50,000 for that year. Now, when the money's in, it invests the same way as a 529 savings plan, where you can pick from different investment options, if you want to be more aggressive, more conservative, however you'd like to invest those dollars. As the money comes out, you can also take a $25,000 deduction on your income taxes. That's the maximum. Doesn't have to be that. It could be 500, 5,000, 10,000, whatever you'd like. Now, these accounts are also a little bit different from a 529, that they stay open in perpetuity. So as long as you've opened it prior to graduation, this account can stay open for 10, 20, 30, however many years that gets you to your vocational or employment goal. So if it's starting a small business, if it's buying a whole bunch of toolsets so you can open your own garage, whatever that is, we're just looking to incentivize work here, and trying to find a way that we can help the working people of West Virginia get a leg up. College is certainly good. It's an option, but it's not the only option, and vocation and trade school is not a fallback. I think it's just a secondary option that's out there. I went to trade school. It seemed to work out for me. I'm here now. But the other aspect of this is that a employer can do a dollar-for-dollar match with an employee, up to $5,000 annually, and then write that off of their business taxes as well, and that's per employee. And lastly, what I'd say, this is not specific as it relates to labor, or right-to-work, or any of that kind of stuff. This is just about work. So the trade unions, who we've put a position on the board for trade unions, they're going to be part of this. Apprenticeship programs in trade unions are qualified in this, so it doesn't necessarily have to be just that school. So doesn't have to be up my way, Blue Ridge Technical College, Berkeley County. So it's, this is just about work. It's just trying to help people out here in the state of West Virginia. This is the first program of this kind in the country. It doesn't exist anywhere else, and certainly the mandate is on us to make it successful. Now, we have had neighboring states inquire about it, Kentucky, Tennessee, and we've had some folks outside of our own congressional delegation, actually, inquire about it as well. So we're hoping this can be another West Virginia first, and a way that we can lead in terms of the way we're helping bolster our blue-collar workforce here in the United States, but specific here, obviously, to West Virginia. The only other thing I wanted to mention to you all while I am here, because I looked at this before I came down, is our Retirement Plus Supplemental Program. It's like a 401K supplemental. It's a 457, as we call it. There's only a few here that are, that work in the city that are signed up for that program. So on top of your pension that you all pay into, and the employees pay into here, we have this 401K supplemental plan that can help bolster your savings as you go into retirement, which is, I think, really something everybody needs to think about. Pensions are good, and I think we're not going to have any issues in that, but it's also good to have some disposable dollars once you reach that retirement age. So as you're talking to employees and people that you're interacting with, working for the city or the county for that matter, I'd urge them to reach out to our office. David Tyson is helping me here in Cavill County, so I'd urge you all to reach out to him, and we can get you all signed up for that if you're not, and/or any of the employees that you all might encounter here in your day-to-day. And the last thing I will say to you is, we had a great dinner here. I don't know if anybody's been to Bistro 905. It was amazing. My hardest thing that I have to deal with is not being able to live here. It's actually one of the first places I brought my wife to when we moved down to Charleston, which I'm mandated by law to live in Charleston. If I wasn't, I'd probably live here. But in any event, I certainly am going to be back quite a bit. It's really inspiring to me to see how much has been done in this great city. Downtown looks just absolutely amazing, and just seeing all these independent businesses there, and all those options that you have for food, and happy to see them thriving during COVID, so just a little side note there. So congratulations on just such a tremendous city that you all have here. But I don't know if I'm able to answer any questions, but I certainly can pause for any. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Moore. Does anyone have any questions for the Treasurer?
I've got a couple.
Councilman Jones?
As usual. First of all, maybe I missed it. Who will these accounts be set up with? With the state government or with private firms?
Yes. So that will be set up through my office, just like a college savings plan, but it will be managed outside by an investment firm, the same way, right now, we have Hartford manages our college 529 savings plan, but the accounts will be opened with my office. So, and the last little thing I forgot to mention in this is, if you do have a college savings plan, and your child, grandchild, does not finish college or does not want to go to college, they can roll one of those into one of these Jump Start Savings Plans.
And now, maybe I didn't catch it. How can you, how can you use these funds for just about anything? Down payment on a home, anything like that?
No, no. What we're calling qualified expenses, so it's tools, equipment, licenses, certifications, or business startup costs related to the trade which you've been educated for, or vocation.
And you say that you could continue this on as long as you have the account, if you close the account out. Is that it for you?
That's it for you, just the way the college savings plan works. I mean, if you wanted to spend 529 college savings dollars on a PhD when you're 50, you're welcome to do that, but once it's expended down, it's expended down.
And you say that it can be employee contributing type of a deal, but now will it be required by the employer to do that?
There's no requirement. It's just an option. If the employer would like to contribute, they can match dollar-for-dollar with whatever contribution the employee is doing.
And are you going to get a good rate on return for the going rate, in other words?
Well, yes, and it will, and some of that will be left to the individual. They'll have options that they can choose from as it relates to the investments, if they want to be more conservative, if they'd like to get into more equities and be a little more risky. They're able to do that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilwoman Rumbaugh?
Hi. So my children participate in the 529 savings plan, and it's been absolutely wonderful, and I really appreciate how it's been managed over their nine and seven years of their lives. So I am a college graduate, but the field that I studied in, I, I'm not working in that field anymore, but I'm a small business owner. I decided to change career paths in my mid-30s. So would this savings plan, does it have to be tied to your degree or certification, or could you say, like, "Oh, I want to..." I'll give you my personal experience. Instead of my communications and advertising degree from NYU, I now own a Montessori-based daycare. To be a Montessori teacher, you should have a Montessori certification. That costs a lot of money to get. So completely different lines of work. Would that be helpful in this type of scenario, or not so much?
It would not so much. We do need to have some discriminator as it relates to qualifications, and that's the best way we can do this, so it doesn't get completely run away, is they have to have either a degree, certification, or they've gone through a union apprenticeship program to be able to receive, to be able to start one of these accounts.
Well, it sounds absolutely wonderful. Thank you for clarifying.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore?
I just have a quick one. So it's for West Virginia students who graduate, and then do they have to attend a West Virginia program to take advantage? So the money stays in West Virginia?
Yes. Now, we've not put any restrictions on where they can buy tools and equipment, because, you know, some of these tools and equipment might not be available in West Virginia. But no, it does stay in West Virginia.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Treasurer Moore. We're delighted to have heard from you this evening, and appreciate you making the trip to Huntington. So glad that you enjoy it, and as the kid of a vocational schoolteacher, I certainly see the need and appreciate the acknowledgement of the need. So thank you so much for all you're working on.
Thank you all so very much, and hopefully I'll get to see you again here soon when I come back.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Fellow council members, as we move forward, I'm going to remind you that we have several items that may have a lot of discussion this evening, so just remember that if you do have a comment, first get my attention, and I will call on you to, to ask your questions and whatnot. So at this time, we're going to move on to item five. It's the second reading of an ordinance, 2021-002. Ms. Miller?
An ordinance of council amending, modifying, and reenacting section 735.06 of the codified ordinances of the City of Huntington, as revised, regarding post-business license issuance inspections, as amended.
We've moved for adoption.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Bailey moves, and Councilman Shockley seconds, and Mr. Dameron, we welcome you back to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This ordinance, number 2021-02, is an ordinance that addresses problems that have developed over the last year and a half in the city regarding business licensees who have obtained business licenses under one purpose, and then have actually engaged in altogether different, different business activity. In particular, we're interested in business licensees who have obtained a business license for something like a restaurant or game room or similar activity, and then have opened a bar illegally. We've had at least three occasions in the past 18 months where that's happened, and each, on each occasion, it's resulted in violence, and people actually being shot. We have one more that has been pending for a while, where the same type of application was made. This ordinance provides the authority within the mayor or his or her designee to make a determination whether someone should go out to the business and make an assessment shortly after it's open, whether or not the business activity is that which is contained in the business application. As you'll recall, last meeting, on first reading, this was amended from the police chief who is designee to the mayor who is designee. The administration's satisfied with that amendment, and the mayor is actually the chief law enforcement officer of the city pursuant to statute. So it's not a big change, but it gives some, it makes the ordinance broader and gives the mayor a little more, a little more leeway as far as who would actually be making the visit to the property. And I'd be glad to answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you, Mr. Dameron. I'll start on my left. Anyone here with any questions for Mr. Dameron? To my right? No questions? All right. So Ms. Miller, is there any public comment on this item?
Ms...
Councilwoman Rumbaugh, who provided you with some comment?
Provided some comments. I will read into the record. A letter from the ACLU, which she received April 12, regarding the proposed ordinance imposition of an annual inspection lease and tax thereon. Mr. Dameron, it's actually addressed to City Attorney Dameron. I'm writing to you regarding the ACLU West Virginia constitutional concerns with the proposed ordinance 753.06. I understand that it will be on first reading before the city council tonight, which was the last meeting, and potential amendments have been discussed. After a careful analysis of the ordinance, and the potential amendments of which we are aware, our organization believes that this proposed ordinance raises serious constitutional concerns with regards to the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution. While the United States Supreme Court has ruled that warrantless searches of businesses have been permitted in certain limited circumstances, I see example Donovan versus Dewey, 452 U.S. 594, 1991. It is important to note that this was not for general police searches for illicit activity, but for a legitimate government interest in ensuring that safety regulations were being enforced by administrative agencies, CID. Additionally, in cases like Dewey, it's important to note that business owners were provided a mechanism to contest a search by requiring the government to bring a civil action if consent was denied. There appears to be no such mechanism in this ordinance. It is not a legitimate government, it is not a legitimate government interest to blankly, blanketly permit warrantless searches of businesses. Law enforcement have a venue by which they may do that in a way that is constitutionally compliant, establishing cause sufficient to procure a warrant. I would be happy to discuss this and provide a longer brief on the issues later in the week pursuant to West Virginia FOIA. I also, please also provide or point me in the right direction, if it is available online, to any audio, video of recent city council meetings or committees, meetings where this was discussed. Thank you in advance for your prompt response. Please furnish all records to L. Stark at ACLU-WV. Regards, Lori Stark, Legal Director, ACLU, West Virginia.
Mr. Dameron, would you like to respond?
I would like to comment on that. We received that letter about the time of the last council meeting, which was two weeks ago. On the Tuesday after that meeting, I provided my response and pointed out the errors of her thoughts and what she included in the letter, which she has made the assumption that these are warrantless searches. They are not searches of the property. They go onto the property during business hours, where any business has to allow anyone to come in the property to conduct business. If they choose to not allow the designee to come onto property, then the city would be required to obtain a warrant from a court. So she's also saying there are no proper processes to challenge this type of assessment, when actually there is. The city would be required to obtain a warrant, and if the city were to make a determination based on the assessment that the business applicant was not operating in accordance with the application, the city would be required to go to court for injunction. She's acting as if the city could just yank their business license, and that's not the case, and that's not the intention. And I included all that in the letter, and we haven't received any response from her.
Thank you, Mr. Dameron. Mayor, do you care to weigh in?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Shockley, Councilman Shockley, did finance and administration meet on this item?
Yes, administration and finance did meet. It was vetted and sent to full council with a favorable recommendation.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make, make a point.
Councilman Anderson?
You know, I don't know how we managed to get to this point, but, you know, all we needed to do, based on what Mr. Dameron just said, you know, there's no, there's no unreasonable search. So all we needed to do in the previous meeting was support the language and support the mayor and the police. And we're divided, and I don't know how we got off the rails and... and the police. And we're divided. And I don't know how we got off the rails, and I don't even know how the ACLU got involved. They really, they really, we had an opportunity to come together as council and discuss it. And before we can even do that, we're, you know, we're being threatened with a lawsuit, and that's just garbage.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else on my right? And Councilman Jackson?
I would like to speak. Well, I think the amendment was made by Councilwoman Rumbaugh and the mayor and the chief all worked together, so I wouldn't say that we weren't supporting them. I mean, you come up with ideas and plans, you go about it. They got together, they made the amendment, and we moved forward. So I still don't think we're divided. We're not going to see eye to eye on everything. That's the whole purpose of this. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Anything else on my left? Councilwoman Rumbaugh?
Yeah. I think at the end of the day, we all want to see the, the, the city be able to conduct these inspections to save lives. And so we've all worked together. Maybe we should have talked a little bit more behind the scenes over the last few weeks so that we're all on board on the semantic language of the bill. But we all want it to move forward so that, yeah, we can do the work and go get the bad guys and all that good stuff. So I think what we have is language that will accomplish that and also future-proof it against maybe litigation from like the ACLU or whomever. I think by amending the language to include, which Scott Damron wrote, like the inclusion of the language "proper warrant," which was not in the original language, I think that's what really sets it apart and makes it agreeable and understood that there will be no warrantless inspections and that we are honoring everyone's constitutional rights while still saving lives.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rumbaugh. Anything else? Then Ms. Miller, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Yes, ma'am, on item number five. Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Rumbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes.
And the ordinance is approved. Thank you all. Next, we will move on to the second reading of an ordinance, 2021-003. Ms. Miller?
An ordinance of council authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the West Virginia Department of Highways for the Hal Greer Boulevard Corridor Improvement Project.
Councilwoman Rumbaugh, do you move to adopt?
I, yes, move to adopt.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Councilman Shockley, seconds. And we welcome Ms. Shell to speak on this item. Welcome, Ms. Shell.
Thank you, Bree Shell. I'm the Planning Director for the City of Huntington. This is a supplemental agreement with the West Virginia Division of Highways to handle the right-of-way acquisition necessary to realign 10th Avenue and Charleston Avenue in partnership with Halger Boulevard Corridor Complete Streets Project. The cost to the city is $220,000 and is in the budget and will be matched with funds from the Kaiba Interstate Planning Commission to total $1.1 million.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Shell? Councilman Jones has a question?
Yes, ma'am. I go over there frequently because I am, I play baseball over there on the fields next to the student housing that was just recently built. How is this going to be accomplished so that those two avenues are contiguous to each other? Will you buy properties? I've not seen a blueprint of it or a picture anywhere. So will they, will we be acquiring certain properties to kind of make them, kind of snake into each other? Is that the intent?
That is correct.
Now, is, will we have to basically get a, one of those orders where you take, acquire a property maybe against someone's wishes in order to get it done for the good of the people? Is that, have we run into anything like that yet?
Well, actually, the agreement is where we'll be working with the Division of Highways through their kind of right-of-way process to begin to enter into those conversations, to do it following all of the federal regulations that are necessary in order to work with all the property owners in that area.
We feel pretty certain that we'll be able to acquire the land.
If we don't, take your domain domain.
That's what I mean. Is that?
All right. We'll address your questions to me, friends.
Are you thinking that that might be what we'll have to do? Because I think it needs to be done, and I'm behind the project 100%, but...
We'll welcome the mayor back to speak to this.
The reason I'm speaking to this, if we get to the point of eminent domain, that's a decision that I'm going to have to make. We, in the eight years that I've been mayor, we have sought every reason possible not to ever go down the path of eminent domain. I will never, ever say that I will not ever play that card. It always helps to have the card in your, in your pocket. But our experience is, is that by working with the Department of Transportation through our own contacts within the community, that we will be able to acquire the properties to straighten out those streets.
Or at least snake them together anyway.
Actually, when you have, snake them is, in essence, just curve, just, it's not going to be the jagged angles that we have right now and easing, if you will, into a single street. So 10th Avenue will angle in, and Charleston Avenue will angle over as well and connect there. Instead of having all of those jumbles of different traffic lights, we'll have one traffic stop. Dalton Avenue will still, we will have to adjust traffic coming in and out of there. It wouldn't be able to do a left turn, for instance, but it would, Dalton Avenue would be able to have a right turn. But those are, that's getting into minutia. We'll be glad to show you. I'm actually surprised. We do have those drawings, and if you want to take a look at it, but please don't slow the vote down. We need to get rolling on this.
I wasn't trying to do that. I was just...
No, no, I just don't want, I don't want to suggest, oh, let's delay this so everybody can have a chance to review the maps. This train's running. Let it run, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Any other questions? No? All right. Then Ms. Miller, was there any public comment on this?
None received.
Thank you. Councilman Shockley, did finance and administration meet?
Yes, ma'am. Administration and finance did meet and forwarded to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? All right. Then we'll vote by roll call. Ms. Miller?
Item number six. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Rumbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson, excuse me, Ms. Wheeler?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the ordinance is approved. Item number seven is the second reading of an ordinance, 2021-004. Ms. Miller?
An ordinance of council authorizing the mayor to enter into, the mayor to purchase a parcel of land in Westmoreland identified as 3208 through 3210 Piedmont Road for the future construction of a fire station.
Madam Chair, move for the adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Bowen moves to adopt, and Councilman Bailey seconds. Mr. Damron, thank you for being here to speak on the item.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is the ordinance's second reading for adoption of, well, approval of the acquisition of 3208 through 3210 Piedmont Road for a fire station in Westmoreland. The appraised value is $95,000. We negotiated a price of $55,000. It's about a one-half acre of property. It has a few structures on it. One structure is being used right now as an apartment, while the other two are substandard and need to be torn down. The other structure would also be demolished eventually for the construction of the fire station. The property is under the control of the bankruptcy court. The bankruptcy trustee has made a motion to the court, and the court has issued an order approving the transfer. So that order's been entered. So what we're now waiting for is approval by council, and if council will approve, then we can close on the sale of the property within about 10 days.
Thank you.
Glad to answer any questions you might have about this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Damron. Anyone for questions? I'll start on the left. Questions for Mr. Damron? Questions on the right? No questions for Mr. Damron? Ms. Miller, was there any public comment?
None received.
Thank you. Councilman Shockley, did finance and administration meet?
Yes, ma'am, met on this item as well, and forwarded to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Then we'll vote by roll call. Ms. Miller?
Item number seven. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Rumbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes.
Thank you. And the ordinance is approved. All right. Item eight, second reading of an ordinance, 2021-005. Ms. Miller?
An ordinance of council amending, modifying, and reenacting Article 761 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Huntington as revised regarding adult game rooms.
Madam Chair, move for the adoption.
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman Bowen, for moving, and Councilman Shockley for your second. We welcome Mr. Damron here again to speak on the item.
Madam Chair, this ordinance is focused on business entities where the application is said to be one thing, and in this case, an adult game room, and is operated wholly as another thing, and is usually an illegal bar. We've had at least three instances in the last eighteen months, as I said earlier, that have resulted in violence where the business applicant says they're going to have an adult game room, and they actually operate an illegal bar. This ordinance will define what an adult game room is, and it exempts out most legitimate business entities such as arcades and things like that. And it requires an applicant to obtain a business license as an adult game room to also have an ABCA license for liquor or beer. So then an adult game room is actually a bar. This is our way of addressing what these people have done to try to get under our radar, open a business entity, and then do something altogether different. Turns out to be something very dangerous. So we think this addresses this issue. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Damron. Anyone have any questions? I'll begin on my left. To my right, Councilman Bailey has a question.
Once these business licenses are obtained, and say I open up a business, and I don't pay my taxes, I get $8,000 or $9,000 behind. Does not the city have a right to send the inner code enforcement to pull the license off of all?
Oh, sure. If they're an illegal business, they're not operating business and paying their taxes. We'd have to go through a process, of course. We can't just shut them down. But we would, first thing we do is report a lien against their property. And then we go through the process of revoking their business license.
That's if they owe back taxes, right?
If they owe back taxes, or if they're not operating as intended, or, you know, there are several reasons why we could move to revoke their business license.
Well, in your position, have you seen where we have a lot of businesses in Huntington who owe back taxes?
We do. I mean, we, I mean, we don't have as many as we did 10 years ago, and we've done a lot of collections, but we have a certain percentage that don't pay their taxes or don't pay them on time.
Any other questions on my right?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Anderson?
So that process of, you know, basically suspending a license at some point, how long does that process take?
Well, it depends on what the, what the reason is.
Okay.
It could take a while, especially if they would seek an injunction or something like that.
No doubt.
I mean, you know what happens when someone files an injunction proceeding, whether or not they're successful. It could take six, nine months to do that. So what we're doing here is, and what the problem that we've had is, the state law has said that issuing a business license is a clerical, essentially a clerical event, that we can't go through and say, what are you going to do, you know, all that kind of thing. As long as a legal application or legal operation, we have to issue them a license, and that's where we've been caught up the last few times with these adult game rooms. So our answer to that is to put prerequisites on getting that type of license, so they can't do what they've done in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Damron. Ms. Miller, was there any public comment on this item?
No, ma'am, none received.
Thank you. Councilman Shockley, did finance and administration meet?
Yes, ma'am. The committee did meet and forwarded to full council with favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? All right. Then we'll vote by roll call. Ms. Miller?
Item number eight. Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Rumbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes.
All right. And the ordinance is approved. Next is item nine, a resolution, 2021-R23. Ms. Miller?
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to furnish the Public Works Department with one new backhoe loader.
Move for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. Councilman Bailey moves, and Councilman Shockley seconds. And thank you for being here, Mr. Ensco.
Madam Chair, members of council, if approved, it'll allow us to purchase a backhoe loader for the street and highway division. The low bidder was Boyd Cat out of Ashland, Kentucky, in the amount of $113,500. It's out of the Capital Outlay Equipment, Motor Equipment Line item. It'll replace a 2009 that has an estimate of about $65,000 in repairs. So it's unusable. We did not receive any bids from any local, within city limits, companies.
Thank you, Mr. Ensco. Any questions for Mr. Ensco, starting on my right? None. Any questions on my left? All right. Thank you, Mr. Ensco. Ms. Miller, was there any public comments submitted for this item?
None received.
Thank you. Councilman Shockley, did finance meet?
Yes, ma'am, met and forwarded to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Then we will vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Item 10 is a resolution, 2021-R24. Ms. Miller?
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Ingram Barge Company.
Councilman Jones, do you move to adopt?
Yes, I move we adopt this.
I'll second.
Okay. Councilman Jones moves to adopt. Councilman Shockley seconds, and we welcome back Mr. Damron to speak on the item.
One more time. This is a lease with Ingram Barge, which is a company that transports coal and other minerals up and down the Ohio River and other rivers in the United States. The lease with Ingram Barge goes back to at least 1980, 40 years ago. It's a renewal of 2,600 linear feet of riverbank beginning at 17th Street West and extending to midway between 24th and 25th Street West. The lease gives them the right to moor, fleet, anchor, tie, and inspect their barges. It does not give them any rights to use the riverbank other than for mooring purposes. The lease term is 10 years. The current lease pay, they pay $26,000 per year for the lease under the new one. It will start out at $31,200 per year and increase every three years up to $41,600 per year. The Ingram Barge lease, we've not ever had any problems as far as I can tell. I mean, the research we've done, there have never been any complaints with Ingram Barge.
Thank you, Mr. Damron. Any questions for Mr. Damron, beginning on my right? Any questions for Mr. Dameron, beginning on my right? Questions on my left? Thank you, Mr. Dameron. Ms. Miller, was there any public comment on this item?
None received.
Councilman Shockley, finance?
Yes, ma'am, the administration and finance did meet on this one as well, sent to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, then we will vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Item 11 is a resolution, 2021-R25, Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to expend funds for seat repair through a payment to the Keith Albee Performing Arts Center Foundation, Inc.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilwoman Rumball moves, Councilwoman Mount seconds. Thank you, mayor.
Madam Chair, this is authorizing $8,700 to be given to the Keith Albee Performing Arts Center Foundation for the use of reupholstering seats in the, in the auditorium. The $8,700 figure was arrived last fall. City council at that time made an appropriation of $32,000 to the Keith Albee Performing Arts Center Foundation for use of COVID-related items for, to prepare the Keith for performances and such, and that they would be able to, once again, be able to provide COVID-related assistance in, in, in their efforts. They spent all but just shy of $8,700, and they asked us if they would be able to utilize that for this purpose. Council advised me that although this is something that we've wanted to be able to assist them on, that the action by the previous council for it to be COVID-related items would prohibit us from being able to utilize this money in this, in this purpose for the seating. Therefore, coming for your approval for the $8,700 to be utilized for, for seating within the auditorium.
Thank you, mayor. Any questions? I'll begin on my left. On my right, any questions for the mayor?
Just a comment, I, I like this, Keith Albee's a wonderful facility.
It's, it is the crown jewel of the downtown.
Indeed.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, so Ms. Miller, was there any public comment?
None received.
Excellent. And Councilman Shockley, finance committee?
Finance committee met on this one as well, forwarded it to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then we will vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Item 12 is another resolution, 2021-R27, Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council confirming the mayor's appointment of Jacqueline Proctor to the Cabell Huntington Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, Councilwoman Mount moves, Councilman Bailey seconds. And Councilwoman Mount, would you like to speak for the personnel committee?
Yes, the personnel committee did meet, and we voted to move forward to full council with a very favorable recommendation.
Excellent, thank you very much. Ms. Miller, did we receive any public comment on this item?
No, ma'am.
All right, any further discussion? Then we will vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Item 13, a resolution, 2021-R28, Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council authorizing the City of Huntington Spring Street Paving Program.
Move for adoption.
Second.
All right, that was Councilman Bailey moved, and Councilman Anderson second. And thank you, Mr. Ensco.
Madam Chair, members of council, before you is our spring paving resolution for the amount of $799,624.66. It's to West Virginia, excuse, West Virginia paving. We piggyback through the division of highways. This will bring our total appropriation this fiscal year to $2.1 million, $2.1.
Wow. Thank you, Mr. Ensco. Questions for Mr. Ensco, beginning on my left? On my right, questions? Councilman Bailey?
Good job, Mr. Ensco.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, Ms. Miller, was there any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Shockley, did finance meet?
Yes, ma'am. Administration and finance did meet and forwarded it to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All right, then we will vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Item number 14 is good and welfare. Ms. Miller, you have presented me with one item from Diana Griffin. Is this the only item that we have?
Yes, ma'am, as of meeting time, that's all we have.
Thank you. I'll read this into the record. This is to Huntington City Council from Diana Griffin, 784 Eastwood Drive, Huntington 25705. My neighbors and I are greatly concerned about appropriate use of vacant land in residential areas zoned R1. In January 2021, a commercial business that sells mobile homes purchased two vacant lots on Saltwell Road, zoned R1. A double-wide mobile home has been placed on each lot. A for-sale sign is on the lot. I have three concerns to bring to you that should be of interest to you and others in the city. One, I understand from city officials that mobile homes can be placed on any vacant lot in residential areas in the city. I also found that the Cabell County Assessor's website tax maps also state on each residential vacant lot that vacant land may be, may include mobile homes that are personal property. This statement is posted on the website on all the vacant lots in residential areas, including Washington Boulevard, 8th Avenue to 12th Avenue, Willshire Boulevard, and Chancellor Hills. My second concern is what constitutes a mobile home park. I would assume it is two or more mobile homes on adjacent lots. There is a third larger vacant lot behind the two lots mentioned above. That lot could also be purchased, and a third mobile home could also be placed on it. According to the city zoning ordinance, I see that mobile home parks are not permitted in residential zones R1 and R2. My third concern is that a commercial business has purchased two vacant lots in a residential area in our city and has advertised to sell their product from there. In this case, it is a mobile home. Evidently, this could happen on any vacant lot in our residential neighborhoods. I bring this to the council's attention, asking you to consider these concerns as they relate to zoning and future land use throughout our city. So that's read into the record, and what I would like to do, and this is new for me, Mr. Mayor, so perhaps you can tell me if I'm going about this properly, but I would like to send this on in the form of a memo and ask for an opinion from the planning department as to whether or not th, these are factual statements.
It would be appropriate for you to send it to me and ask for me to arrange for an appropriate response. I can give you a high-level view, because we have had ongoing conversation about this. The properties, let, I think very highly of Ms. Griffin. So this is not intended to be a debate or a criticism of her, of her analysis or the communication that she's sending each of you as members of, of council. I happen to be quite familiar with manufactured housing. Manufactured housing is not the same as mobile homes. And it hasn't been for well over 50 years. There are homes that are constructed elsewhere onsite, much like an assembly line, and are shipped by trailer to a site, and that site has to have footers in such place, and they have to be perfectly square. Unlike a footer being established for a stick-built house. They might be off-center or out of angle in some fashion on a stick-built house, but they have to be absolutely perfectly square for a manufactured housing. The reason that I know this, when I, my first job out of graduate school, I was managing the, the housing inspection division of the city, and we had to go, and there were some, Dink Allen and John Allen in Barbersville were starting to invest in bringing some of these houses to have them built in Huntington. And we arranged for our inspectors to go down to the manufacturer location in Roanoke, Virginia to see how they were being built. And they were being arranged at the time. Before that, when my family first moved to Huntington in 1972, my parents were looking to buy a house. They went to look at spec homes up in the Toledo, Ohio area, and were considering having a house being constructed of a similar fashion, looking at the model house, how it would be, looking at the land, how it would be structured. And it just so happened that while all of that was going on in 1972, and then in 1979 and 1980, in my first years out of, out of college, in 2001, I bought a home that was built that way. My, I bought my in-laws' house, and they had the house brought in on trailers, set on the lot, and there's an exact replica of our house. As you start to turn off up in Wheeling, West Virginia, turning off to go up the hill towards Ogilvy Park, there is a house that is an exact replica, except the garage is on the opposite side of ours. And my wife loves to go driving by there, there's our, our home. The point simply being, mobile home house, mobile homes and manufactured housing are two separate items. The property that's been suggested and concerned about on Saltwell Road, our inspectors, our planners have been out looking at it, and the footers are not going to be jacked-up metal surrounding footers. They're going to be real footers, like every other house, and they have, they have to be painted and brought to the same color scheme and such as any other house would, would have. All that being said, we will, I will arrange for a response to be provided to you, but I didn't, since it's fresh in every one of your minds, we have pros who manage our planning offices. And just because it might be something that is different from what has been done, does not mean that they're not on top of it and reviewing it. And our planners and our code enforcement officers are reviewing it, and I feel quite confident in their assessments. But I will be glad to arrange for a response to be made to you, Madam Chair, and we will copy all members of council so that you can be so advised.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and glad that it's already on their radar. This is first...
Sorry for the lengthy, um, march down memory lane, but, son of a gun, it's amazing, Coach, all the things that you start to absorb over a period of time.
Thank you, sir. All right, so now we'll move on to good and welfare from our fellow council members, and we'll begin on my right. Anyone on my right?
I have...
Councilman Jones?
I have one concern. I see we have a copy of the letter from the Health Department that addressed this Monty Fowler and his letter that he sent to all of us. Has that been addressed to this citizen? Have we given him a copy of this, or is somebody, I think somebody said he was in their district? Have we talked to him? So that, were you able to talk to him?
No.
I have yet to speak with him.
Should we send him a copy of this letter to show him, you know?
Let me, let me interrupt, Councilman Jones. So since the Health Department provided their report, the governor made some changes to the policies. And so the Health Department is revisiting what they prepared for us, so we will have a more accurate and up-to-date report from them. So I think it would be prudent to wait until we have clarification from them, so that we're sending him the most current and accurate...
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you.
You're very welcome. Anyone else on my right? On my left? All right, then, thank you all to participating, and those viewing from home as well. I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.